Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. It is 7:39. This is our September 24th meeting. We are called to order. Let everyone rise and pledge a flag, please. Thank you. Angela, roll call, please.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Amy Hei.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Saba Alzayed.
Here. Mr. Bell, tell you.
Madam President, I note for the record, we were in executive session from 7 o'clock to approximately 7:40 with regard to personnel as well as potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. All righty. So really quickly, I kind of want to share an experience I had two weeks ago where Mr. Truman drove me around Bridgeport, and we were just examining kind of the state of Bridgeport in a lot of different ways and having some conversations around the cleanliness and organization. And one thing that I feel really fortunate about is we have a fantastic staff here and a really great team, people that really love Bridgeport and love being from Bridgeport. They don't consider it a job, as far as I can see. So anyone that I've interacted with that works within the borough really loves this place. So you'll often see times where, you know, Mr. Truman and I are walking down the road, and he sees a piece of trash, and he'll pick it up and put it away, or he sees that something needs to be fixed and immediately calls. So there's a sense of urgency and making sure that our town's taken care of. And I learned some interesting facts. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Truman, but I think you mentioned that the sweeper goes around every street in Bridgeport every six weeks?
That during warm winter months prior to it being winterized, yes, that is correct.
So I'd say that's pretty clean of every single street in Bridgeport. So Philadelphia had this over a year's time where they wanted to clean every street in Philadelphia, where we're getting it done every six weeks, I think is really fantastic. So just wanted to commend everyone that's involved in that and thank them. I think it's, you know, obviously Bridgeport's a great place to live, and I'll try to share some tidbits that I learned, as I know that not everybody's exposed to this information. So. All right, we can move on to our first item on the agenda. We have for council consideration, September 10th, 2024, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Shank, second for Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item is for council consideration, appointment of a civil service commission alternate. Mr. Truman, do you want to add some detail here, please?
Certainly. Members of council, as you are aware and for any audience member that watched or was present for, I believe it was the meeting, two meetings ago, we appointed a citizen, a resident, to fill a vacancy on the actual civil service commission itself as Mr. Dennis Arangers had stepped down after serving on the board for a couple of years. Ideally, we also have a civil service commission alternate, much like we do on the zoning hearing board. And that person is, serves in lieu of, or in the event that one of the three actual civil service members, commission members cannot attend a meeting or a testing or evaluation for the purpose of the civil service commission, if anybody isn't aware, is to basically be the evaluative board for new full-time police hires and interdepartmental promotions. If we were promoting to a captain or sergeant or lieutenant, that testing process would also be overseen by the civil service commission. Basically, it's always good to have an alternate in place. And we have four candidates that were initially interested in the actual civil service vacancy that have still expressed interest in the alternate position for council to select from.
I'll make a motion to appoint Nikisha Johnson as the alternate for the civil service commission.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Nolan, a second from Mr. Heil. Do you have any questions or comments from council or the public on the appointment?
I'll just say that Ms. Johnson is an exceptional qualified person, and the fact that we have four good people qualifying is a very good sign because it's hard to get people to apply for these things. So I appreciate everyone who applied.
Agreed. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. She's appointed. All right, next up on our agenda, we have a presentation of Bridgeport Business Association for our Good Citizens, their Good Citizens Award to Ms. Heather and Brian, so you guys can come up and share your thoughts.
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Thank you for allowing, thank you for allowing the BBA the opportunity to once again present the Good Citizen Award. The Good Citizen Award is given to business owners and residents to recognize them as they go above and beyond in their service and generosity to others in their community. The BBA is very pleased to present tonight's Good Citizen Award to not just one good citizen, but to two very worthy recipients. The two recipients of tonight's awards are Ms. Heather Casenza and Mr. Brian Mattis. Heather and Brian have been nominated by their fellow, I'm sorry.
I'll make sure it gets recorded.
I got you. Me or the microphone? Heather and Brian have been nominated by their fellow residents. Hello?
Forget I was here.
It's me, Keith, it's me, it's not you. It's not the mic.
I'm sorry, Ray, I'm very nice to be president.
Again, Heather Casenza and Brian Mattis. Heather and Brian have been nominated by their fellow residents and fellow business owners because of the assistance and support they have always willingly and generously provided to others. It was through their actions during the flooding tragedy in September 2021, due to tropical storm Ida, that Heather and Brian showed why they truly deserved a word of good citizenship. Their efforts to help and to provide support to their fellow neighbors did not go unnoticed. It is because these reasons and others, the BBA is truly honored to acknowledge Heather and Brian tonight and to thank them publicly. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Brian, and please come on up to accept the award.
It's hard to believe that was three years ago, huh? Yeah, wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Congratulations.
Thank you, council.
Congratulations.
Thank you, council.
Thank you to the BBA for sharing these special moments with us, and thank you to our special residents. Congratulations. If you guys want to stick around, you're welcome to, but if not, that's also fine. We have a short agenda tonight, but you're welcome to head on out if you'd like to. All right. All right, next up on the agenda for council consideration, authorizing, an authorization to advertise ordinance 2024-02, establishing an art and beautification program. Do you have a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Hauck, second for Mr. Shank. Do we have any comments or questions from council or the public?
Do we want to just describe the
Sure thing.
the basis of it before we move on with the agenda, just because I know there's going to be folks that are going to be watching that'll want to know what the program's all about. Please.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Shank. So yeah, I think the, one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that the borough always has a budget to beautify and maintain the borough, and I think this does that. So we'd like to kind of invite businesses and organizations that would like to invest in the borough, and the first step to kind of that commitment to the community is so that, is through this ordinance. We, the details will share out, I guess, during the next meeting. So I think that we can kind of save everyone all of that there. But Mr. Truman or Mr. Bell, do you guys have any other thoughts about?
No, it would be tied to the cost of construction projects within the borough, and there would be a dedication of certain funds from the applicant, and the funds would be used for art installations, paintings, sculptures, landscaping, trees, flowers, et cetera. So it gives us an opportunity to have an impact on the borough above and beyond the new investment in the borough by an individual applicant.
Thank you. That was great. So yeah, the idea is that people can't come invest in Bridgeport unless they're invested in Bridgeport's people. So I think that's really the general idea. So we will be advertising that and then passing it in the next meeting. Does anyone from council or the public have any questions?
And this would mean that if someone has a nice thing, they're making, they're building, you know, one part of town that always gets nice things, we would be able to invest that money in beautification in other places that might feel neglected, right? So that's, that's a great point. So that people think that one area of town does not get enough attention. Thank you to council president, Madam President, I like to say, and will hopefully be saying more of. And I, we will make sure that all parts of the town are getting the attention they deserve as a result of this program.
Agreed. All right, I think we had the votes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, the motion to advertise carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to our finance section here. For council consideration, resolution 2024-37, authorizing the disposal of certain household items via sealed bid submission. Mr. Truman, do you want to elaborate a little bit here?
Sure. Members of council, members of the audience, within the last couple of months, the borough purchased a residential property at 137 West Third Street. It was 137 and 139. One is a vacant lot, one is a single-family detached dwelling unit. That property came fully equipped with appliances, items, and as a result, the plan is ultimately to demolish that building. And we didn't think it made a lot of sense to demolish a property with new appliances and cabinets and counters in there, so HVAC unit. So we have stripped those items out, and the method in which boroughs or governing bodies are required to dispose of certain items, we could either hold an auction or we could hold a sealed bid process where we accept bids on the items with a certain deadline, and then we open those bids publicly at a, at an advertised time. And frankly, that is, I think, a lot easier to manage than an auction. So I think that makes, is the most pragmatic way to move forward with disposing of these items.
Any chance you know where people can find this announcement?
Once council approves the resolution, it will be advertised. We're required to put it into a local public circulation, so it'll be in the Times Herald, and it will also be on the borough website.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Shank, a second for Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions from council or the public?
Just a comment that I would like to actually see Mr. Truman run the longest auction ever.
Probably be the slowest auction ever also.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on for our second point here in finance. For council consideration, motion to accept the results of the CY 2023 final pension audit.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Heil, second from Ms. Gundrum. Do you have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Finally, for council consideration, approval of the bills and salaries for September 2024.
Make the motion.
Second.
A motion for Ms. Hauck, a second for Ms. Hei. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. We can move on to unfinished business, and I know Mr. Truman and I have one item from the last meeting where we had purchased the lots on Fifth Street, the parking lot for Wawa. I don't think we had disclosed the amount, so do you want to share that with the public? And that was complete oversight by my part.
Yeah, thank you, President Alzayed. And it wasn't just an oversight on your part. Generally, that is delineated during the public meeting. When we've acquired the last several properties, through the buyout program or through the aforementioned Third Street property, we referenced what the, what the price was. It was just a general oversight. The purchase price for the, the old Camelot parking lot or the lot behind Wawa, as it's referred to, is going to be $250,000.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Are there any questions from council or the public on that? All right, I'm glad we covered it up. Are there any other items of unfinished business anyone would like to discuss? All right, seeing there's none, we can move on to our committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? All right, I'd love to share that our Halloween committee is still up and running and very excited for the upcoming month. As you saw in the last meeting, we had quite a suspenseful meeting. I just want to remind everyone that events are beginning in the start of the month, and we can kind of share some of the events in the coming meeting. The only event that I do want to highlight is the one that's kind of closest to my heart and I think the most important for me. I do want to make sure that every child in Bridgeport gets a costume, an adult that wants one. So if you have any laying around, you know, in your basement, in your attic, somewhere in your closet, and you want to share them, there are five locations that are accepting gently-used older costumes. Frosty Falls, Reach, Fourth Street Cafe, The Borough. Oh, and Rip House have all generously allowed for us to have a box there. Otherwise, you can reach out to me, and I'm happy to coordinate somebody picking them up. So yeah, please consider donating. Thank you to everyone that has already done that. For any information, our website, booportpa.com is being updated daily, so please take a look. All right, we can move on to mayor's reports. Mayor Jack's here.
Well, I would like to just start by saying thank you for all of your hard work on this Halloween committee because, I mean, we've made such huge strides already. It hasn't even begun. If you haven't been by Borough Hall, if you're watching from home, you might want to stop by. You're, you might be missing out on a little bit of the action already. So thank you. I did want to thank everyone who joined for our end of summer community game night. It was clear that everyone in attendance had a blast, so I'm hopeful we can run more of these throughout the year. And thank you to the Norristown Library for facilitating the event and to Montco Family Services for dinner. This is a reminder that my monthly office hours will be taking place tomorrow, September 25th, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. in my office on the first floor of Borough Hall. Walk-ins are welcome, so please stop by. And finally, I just wanted to mention the article that was published in the Philadelphia Inquirer just a few days ago regarding the Montgomery County SPCA, as they are our local SPCA. It was truly a horrifying read for me. The reporter shared the terribly unsafe conditions for the animals housed there that could be fixed with their millions of dollars in funds that they refused to spend on upkeep, the poor treatment of animals by some of their staff, and seemingly casual euthanasia on animals that are healthy and non-aggressive. I did make a post about this article on my official Facebook page and encourage all to review the article, which is attached to the post, and also the petition from some of the SPCA's volunteers, which is also linked there. The volunteers are trying to get as many people as possible to sign this petition in order to gain traction about this story that affects our community. And if you have any questions regarding how you can help or if you would like to access this information outside of Facebook, please do not hesitate to reach out. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. All right, we move to chief's report.
Good evening, Bridgeport. Bridgeport Police is accepting applications with the Civil Service Commission of Bridgeport for testing to occur on the 12th of October at the Upper Marionian Area Middle School across Field Road at 7:30 a.m. The applications can be found on the Bridgeport website or contact Bridgeport Police, and we have hard copy, hard copies there. The tests or the applications are due on the 4th of October by 4:00 p.m. So we look forward, if you spread the word, for those people that are looking to get into law enforcement and want to stay local. It's a great, it's a great opportunity to get on a list. The Bridgeport 5K is coming up, so we're looking forward to that. Reminding, reminding our drivers to pay attention to all the electronic speed signs are going to be going up, and electronic signboards are going to be going up about a week before. To remind people to, especially coming in off of River Road on, onto East Fourth Street between Prospect and Depot Street, the follow directions is going to be staying to the right. We're going to have runners and patterns. A lot of, there'll be a lot of notifications. We'll have fire police out and a lot of police officers to ensure that the streets are safe for our runners to enjoy themselves and enjoy the topography, especially the hills of Bridgeport. Congratulations to, to Brian and Heather. I feel compelled to say even more, you guys are credit to this community for what you do. You have a professional staff, and you have people that are, that are leaders in the community, and you both are. And whether it was on the back of dump trucks and pulling washers and dryers out of people's basements that you might not even have known individually, or, or helping people with supplies and funneling and being points to funnel supplies, whether it was water, food, batteries, and all that kind of stuff, like Heather. And those actions for that lengthy period of time, that just does not happen everywhere. And Bridgeport was truly different in how it handled a true disaster. So my, so much, my honor and credit go out, go out to you both for everything that you did. There's not enough words to fill, to fill, to fill everything that needs to be said. As far as regular police operations, I want to congratulate Detective Sergeant Murphy for capturing two people for aggravated assault and discharge of a firearm that was back in last December. We can report that the arrests of two individuals, Destiny Hernandez and Juriana Maria Mayo, and they are currently being housed in the Berks County Prison pending their removal and being taken down to the Montgomery County Prison to deal with the charges that will be held in our local district court for aggravated assault. We also, to report, we had someone that decided it was a good idea to scale the fences at Memorial Park and vandalize the Bachi Courts. That individual was arrested and taken to the Montgomery County Prison and charged. So that's all I have for you tonight, but once again, thank you for everything that you guys did. It seems like only yesterday. I can't believe it's been three years, but, and it's all close to our hearts, so thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, we can move on to new business. Are there any items of new business anyone would like to share? All right, seeing there's none, we can move on to open forum announcements. Are there any announcements anyone would like to share?
Just a reminder, October 5th, Saturday morning, registration starts at 7:30. Event starts at 9:00 a.m. That would be the 7th Annual 2024 Bridgeport 5K. We already have well over 100 registrants signed up for the event, but we always have room for more. We have, as always, thankful and grateful for our fantastic sponsors that, that help us ultimately further the, further the goal of the event, which is a fundraising event, to, to benefit two beneficiaries, the same two beneficiaries that we utilized last year. And that would be the Bridgeport Fire Department and the Upper Marionian Area Community Cupboard. One organization that protects us, another one that feeds and potentially clothes us. So, and so many people in our community benefit from, from both organizations, so certainly a worthy cause. There is, in addition to the race itself, there's a kids' fun run directly afterwards. The kids all get participation medals. Everybody receives a T-shirt and a gift bag for, for registering. Just gearing up to be a really good event, as always. And, you know, last year was one of our most heavily populated, or heavily attended and registered 5Ks. But let's see if we can eclipse the record. Our record, I believe, is 155 runners, and that was several years back. So let's hope when these last week and a half weekend, we can break that record. Additionally, I want to thank everybody who came out for the last, the final official Bridgeport Family Movie Night of, of the year. They do generally run from May to September. That was this past Saturday. We had a good turnout for the newest Transformers movie. We will, however, have a, as part of Booport, we will be having a, an additional movie night this year where we will be, we'll be announcing, we'll be announcing the movie that we're going to be showing in the very near future. I think the, the members of the event committee have it narrowed down to, to a couple of spooky, family-friendly classics. Maybe it'll be Nightmare Before Christmas, maybe it'll be Hocus Pocus. But yes, we'll have advertisements out for that in the very near future. And President Alzayed, can you remind us what, what night the movie night is? Do you know that off the, don't mean to put you on the spot there.
I believe it's the 11th or the 12th, but.
It would be the 12th then, okay. Yeah, Saturday, October 12th will be the, will be the Booport Family Movie Night. So encourage everybody to attend that. That's all I have. Thank you. And you know what, going back to the 5K, we do have a good amount of volunteers to help us operate the event, but we could always utilize more. If anybody is interested in volunteering, just like the runners, you would get a, a T-shirt, a race shirt, a race bag, and perhaps more importantly, you know, my undying gratitude. Anybody interested, anybody interested could, could call Borough Hall or email me at ktruman@bridgeportborough.org, and we'd be really appreciative. Thank you. That's all I have.
In addition to your undying gratitude, isn't there also Suzie Joe Donuts in the morning?
I mean, you know, you gotta, you gotta keep some of the, you know, you gotta keep some of the trade secrets close to the vest, yeah. I mean, we have, we've got, we've got produce that morning. We will have a ton of power bars, energy drinks, coffee, wonderful donuts from Suzie Joe's, as always, one of our fine sponsors. There's a lot of, Growing Bridgeport Together will be there with, they'll, they'll be painting pumpkins like we do every year, some other fun activities. There will be a list of exhibits that will be vendors that'll be setting up exhibit tables there. Mark Shepard will be our emcee and DJ, and we'll be singing the National Anthem this year. Just a lot of, a lot, a lot of, a lot of good value to, to come out to Rotunda Riverfront Park there behind Frosty Falls near the Fish Ladder, Saturday morning, October 5th, from anywhere from seven, again, registration starts at 7:30, race begins at 9:00, and we wrap up around noon. So come on out. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. On a final note, if anyone has volunteer interest or any interest in Halloween at all, you do not have to have any previous contact with any of us or have worked at all with any of the things that we've done. If you think you're inspired, if you're inspired by what you're saying and you just really want to get involved, there is plenty to do, and we're super excited to meet new people and make new friends. So feel free to reach out to me or Mr. Truman or anyone else regarding any of the events we have, including the Halloween events specifically coming up, and I'm sure we'll find something fun for you to do. All right, are there any other announcements? Seeing there are none, additional announcements, we can move on to public comments. Are there any members of the public that? any members of the public that would like to comment this evening? Okay. We can certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
All right. It is 8:09. Thank you for coming, everyone. We are adjourned.